Okay, we are live.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, it is nine thirty. August eighteenth meeting, commission meeting, we'll start off with the prayer. Come on up, Brandon, Brandon Ritchie's gonna leave some prayer, anyone who wants to join please rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this day, this August eighteenth, praying that we are good stewards of the time you've given us this day, Father. That we make much of the hours that we have laid out before us, Father. And we find ourselves this morning coming before you again petitioning on behalf of our elected officials. Those who have taken the task of governing us, Father, we pray that they do so wisely, Father, and that the decisions that they make are ones that are beneficial to those who they have been placed over and placed to represent, Father God. We thank you for them, for their commitment to leading, their commitment to governing, Father God, and pray that the decisions they make are not only ones that work on behalf of the people in which have elected them, but also ones that are glorifying to you above all things. We thank you for the opportunities we have this day. We thank you for these men and women and those who serve us in all aspects of our life, Father. We thank you for just the opportunity to come and petition you on their behalf. We pray these things in your son's precious name, amen.
Amen. You're also pleased to join us in the pleasure of egressions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, all, thank you for attending our meeting this morning. We're gonna start off with public input on general items and we have a gentleman that wanted to speak briefly before, so he could be excused. Come on up.
Thank you.
And there's a form here, please sign in.
Sure.
And also state the name and address.
Sure, speaker for the record, please. My name is Joseph Barnes, my address is one one four five nine Shady Lane Drive, of course, here in beautiful Plymouth, Indiana. I've looked at that address for eighteen years and I am an avid cyclist, used to own the bike shop in Culver. And the reason for me bringing that up is because I've lost forty pounds and I suddenly decided to get back on a bike and ride around the neighborhood. I happened to notice that Shady Lane, the southern portion of Shady Lane's sunny land is in terrible shape. We have many, many spots that are pure gravel, paving is crumbling. Started speaking with a few neighbors, Mr. Bob Sturvent, another local neighbor. He's been there for thirty-three years and the last time, well, the road was originally paved thirty-three years ago. The last time any paving had been done, other than patchwork, has been over ten years ago. The road is in what I consider bad shape. I cannot ride a road bike, the entire bike on there anymore. Too many gravel, rocks, chips, you can't ride on that. I've talked to several neighbors, there are several neighbors that will not walk on the road because it is that bad. With that, I asked the commissioners to investigate some type of remediation on that road. Like I say, I've been there eighteen years and we know the patch guy very well. That's all I have to say, are there any questions?
Can you call me later?
Yes, sir.
Please.
Yes, sir.
And I need to talk to you about that, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen, have a great day.
Okay, move on to.
Was there anybody else?
Oh, I'm sorry, anybody else wanna wanna speak?
On agenda items.
Nope, seeing none, we'll move on to highway, Jason?
Morning.
Good morning.
Just give me one here, Jason, is there a second one?
Yeah, this one's just the original.
Okay.
I didn't have time to make the copies for Craig, just signed it here a minute ago.
And before we get started with your presentation, Jason, I want to thank you and your guys for helping us with that event on Friday. As far as the other signage for the Woloski Road is, what's the schedule on that stuff?
I think they're all in.
Wonderful, okay.
I think we went ahead and just got them all.
Perfect.
So whenever we probably wanna put those up or wherever the location you want them, we can go ahead and get that one.
All right, I'll check in with you after that, so thank you.
And I wanna go ahead and say why you bring it up, thank you for the job you did. It was a nice ceremony, very respectful of the Woloski family and I know you put a lot of effort into it, so thank you. First cut is Surf Internet. It's Michigan Road, third, fourth, Pierce, Douglas, Custer, Deborah, fifth, five C, five D, six A, six C, seventh, to US six, to veterans, North Township. They're gonna be tying into their network, South Loop Pass, and expanding their network through the neighborhoods there, so it's all directional bore. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. I'm looking at the form, maybe I'm missing, who's the company again?
Surf, Surf Internet.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna say thank you to Surf because I actually specifically, actually Adam and I were out doing some constituent contact up in that area about a year ago and constituents were asking about how soon this would get done and I was in contact with Surf and within a year they're up there getting it done, so I appreciate that and I second the motion.
Motion made second to approve the request from Surf Internet, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Did you get a copy of this, Angie?
No, that's the only copy I had, that's the only copy I had.
Who's, who's, who's?
Who's doing the?
BSM.
Oh, there it is, I'm sorry, BSM groups, okay. And we have nexus for BSM, they are wanting to work on Plymouth Ocean Trail between Lilac and Creekside Boulevard in Center Township. And it's a directional bore, so is that fiber also, or?
Yes.
Okay. A motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Motion made second to the request by BSM, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
I'm giving you a brief on Yell Trail. Just an update, NIPSCO had stated that the current intended completion date is going to be September twenty-sixth of twenty-five. That's on a Friday, if the port construction is to start the demolition on the existing bridge for the following Monday, which would be on September twenty-ninth, then seventy days, ten weeks worth of work, puts the port construction at a completion date of December eighth, twenty twenty-five at the very best. The construction completion date is December twelfth. That leaves less than one week's worth of floating for schedules or unforeseen construction issues, including weather type delays. At that time of year, I don't expect the port construction would be able to pave the asphalt due to the plant's close down for seasonal. Project may end up in a situation where the port construction must build up an aggregate subbase to open the road during the winter with cars and drivers on stone approaches and directly on the bridge beams. Then in spring of twenty-six, the port construction would have to close the bridge again, regrade stone, put the bridge, weatherproofing, and pavement on roadway. This would put a significant portion of the project expenses into twenty twenty-six. The alternative would be to keep, to either keep the bridge closed through the winter to avoid additional temporary aggregate costs or to incentivize the port construction to construct the project faster so they could get it paved this year. This situation, all predicaments are on the assumption that NIPSCO is to finish out by twenty twenty-six. I have forward this on to NIPSCO to try to get an update if they could potentially move this date up any to expedite this a little bit faster. So if I hear something back from them, but just kind of giving you a heads up of where we are with the utilities. Two thirty-two, last week the port construction poured the sidewalks on the bridge deck early in the week and the east wall was poured on Friday, all subgrades were purged and fifty-three limestone was placed for subgrade treatments. This week the port construction will pour the west walls in all four bridge transitions. Seven curbs will be poured to protect the stone structures. The base asphalt will be placed, asphalt will have a transition at the bridge curbs and roadway cuts for pedestrians and tractor crawlies to navigate the roadway as smoothly as possible. The port construction will be done with necessary work on the twenty-third for the festival and plan to reclose the road. Continue construction on September eighth. I don't know if you've been out there, but it does look pretty good. Let's get down and go to the MOU for the Academy Drive. Academy Drive has had the asphalt cut completed and deteriorated areas hauled out and smoothed out and patch has been completed, so basically all the bad spots they've cut out, repatch, rolled. Dogwood and US six, that's, this will be an N dot update. I was looking and Jesse called me also on it, just to give me an FYI. But for MACOG, there are several alternatives that are being considered for Dogwood and US six. Potential roundabouts, signal intersections, left turn auxiliary lanes for US six as well as providing a traffic and traffic signals. This project is beginning program, being programmed, so design will be sometime this fiscal year with construction planned for twenty-third.
Yeah, in that, or sorry, MACOG approved the filing for the preliminary stages of this project at the meeting last Wednesday, so it's good to see, this is obviously probably what may be our second or third worst intersection in the county as far as accidents go.
There's a lot of traffic up there at that intersection.
So have you told you guys anything, what about the buggy lanes, because in my understanding there's buggy lanes going down two six from Nap and E to Raymond?
I haven't heard anything about that.
Well, they're doing the engineering on it, my understanding, they've had people out there surveying. So I guess I would say ask them the next time you're at MACOG. Because I don't know how you put a roundabout in out there and still put buggy lanes in.
Because they somewhat have that dirt lane, what, beach roughly, a little bit to the west and to the east and too. But yeah, I'm pretty sure that's something they're planning to do. Road program, chip and seal, for the year we've completed sixty-seven miles total, that's ninety-six miles traveled. That had to do with the triple seals and double seals that'd be done. Total was one one, two hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three oh seven. Codex paving, planning to start Codex paving within the next week, just add twenty thousand ton of milling's crush. Road work, for the guys right now, we're working on patching brush, public pipes, getting equipment ready for paving, prepping roads for paving, cleaning up chip and seal equipment. Community crossings, third road's completed, sixteen C's completed, ninth road's completed, nutmeg. Last update was the twenty-fifth, the start on the milling. Additional paving projects, meeting today to discuss the scheduling and reviewing projects and equipment for the total patcher, request that to be a prepaid once that's approved.
I'll look at first before we go any further, motion to make the payment for the total patcher a prepaid. I mean, the council will take that up next week, so we can get him a check.
So moved.
Second, motion made second to approve payment for the total patcher being a prepaid, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
That's all I got.
All right. I do wanna let you know as well, Jason, when I was at MACOG last week, I initiated a conversation with the surrounding counties about creating possibly a shared buggy damage mitigation task force so that we can look at, I know that LTAP Ohio did some studies to look at techniques and materials that may help with the mitigation, that they said that if you have a county road or a state road that is heavily traveled by horse and buggy, that it costs on average three times per mile what a road without buggy traffic will cost in order to maintain it. And other research that I found last week is that Noble County just raised their buggy plate fee to two hundred and fifty dollars a year. So I think at sometime in the near future, we probably need to revisit what we're charging on that as well, so.
Why don't you stay in touch with MACOG and report back on this, what you find, okay? You got anything for Jason?
I don't know, other than that?
I think LTAP was even somewhat looking into that, doing studies on that and trying to figure out alternative methods, different painting designs and that stuff as well.
Yep.
Maybe they'll kind of combine their efforts a little bit into that.
Yep. And now the Elkhart County Commissioner told me that their experiences at the Amish say that they would rather pay extra than put synthetic horseshoes on their horses, but you know, from, if it's three times the regular cost to maintain the road and the average taxpayer is paying over five hundred dollars a year in gas tax to go towards the roads, I don't know that they're gonna want a fifteen hundred dollar per plate buggy tax.
I mean, just the longevity end of it, it's a lot frequent turn on it. You got a lot more maintenance that goes into it as well. It is, it's a lot to maintain Amish roads, it really is.
And I absolutely, you know, respect everybody's religious practices and things like that. We wanna tread very lightly on First Amendment issues, but it's also not fair to the rest of the taxpayers to go out and spend sixty thousand dollars a mile to redo a road and three or four months later it's ruined, you know?
Got anything else, Jason?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
About to ask you, Angie, do we have, there you go, do we have the ordinance on the Plan Commission?
Yeah, and that public hearing is not set until nine fifty, so you got two minutes.
Okay, well, we'll go over this ordinance a little bit, and basically what it is, do you have the gentleman's name?
Ordinance, John and Virginia Brown.
Where's it at, I missed it here, oh, there you go, okay. We had a Plan Commission, unfortunately Nicholas couldn't be here today. I thought Phil was supposed to be coming, but I don't see him, so these people come in, wanted to change their zoning from, I think it's T one to A one, and the reason being is they got young children, I believe they wanna build a house eventually on this property, but it cannot have like four H animals and stuff in it, in a, in a, T one. So that was the reason behind it, it went in front of the Plan Commission and it was approved. So I guess we'll just read the ordinance, so we have it in the record, it's ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the county of Marshall, Indiana to change the zoning classification of a parcel number fifty, dash forty-two, dash ten, dash zero zero zero, dash zero zero two, dash zero zero zero, dash zero zero nine, located on the north side of four A Road, Plymouth, Indiana in North Township, Marshall County, Indiana, from T one town residential to, excuse me, it's A three agricultural residential district. Whereas John and Virginia Brown trustees, Brown revocable living trust, life state by, established by Derek Hernandez, has petitioned to amend the zoning map of Marshall County, Indiana for said property from T one town residential to A three agricultural residential district. And whereas a map depicting the proposed map change is attached as exhibit A and whereas a copy of the deed is attached as exhibit B and whereas a Marshall County Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing after legal notification and recommend favorably on said map amendment at its regularly scheduled meeting on July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. And whereas the Marshall County Commissioners determined said zoning map amendment would benefit the development of land in Marshall County, now therefore be it ordained that the zoning map of Marshall County, Indiana be amended to exhibit Z, the above described real estate to A three agricultural residential district. This ordinance shall be full force and effect on and after passage, if it be this day. Can you scroll up a little bit, Troy, I think that's all of it. Yes, that's it there, except for the commissioner's decision, so it's nine fifty, so at Marshall Public Hearing.
So moved, second.
Motion made second, go to Public Hearing, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Anyone here has a comments or thoughts on this proposed change in the ordinance for this property? Please come forward, raise your hand, come forward.
So I just have, the auditor had provided that her office received, looks like today, a letter from property owners and residents of Linkville. It's dated yesterday, it says petition to keep present zoning the same, Linkville four A Road, and it's signed by eight people, several of which I, they just did their signatures, not their printed names, several which I can't understand the writing, but I'll read the ones that I can, one is Steve Richard. It's like Kim Riddle, Robin Mevis, Richard Baker, and Dolores Baker. And then, like I said, there were eight total, the others I couldn't read, but that's, that's all it says.
Did they have a reason why, Sean?
No, it doesn't say anything really, they just like to keep the same zoning. Were these concerns raised at the P N S hearing?
I don't remember concerns, you know, much of any concerns being raised, as a matter of fact, I don't think there was anybody leaving there at the meeting. If I remember right. And the zoning's not changed in the area, it's only changed on that one property, I don't know if there's confusion there or not, the zoning only changed on that one property.
Do you remember where, where you say it's four A and Lilac, right, and basically that is right where Linkville is?
Yeah.
Oh, here we go.
So it's on the, it's on the edge of the town, so to speak. And this looks like it's actually the name.
Well, and like I say, the gentleman was asked, they cannot have four H animals in a T one. And that was their request, why they wanted to do this.
Yep, and this is before a Plan Commission, right?
Yes.
Okay, did they have any conditions or stipulations to it?
No.
Okay.
Just whatever A one or A three covers, that's what would apply to this property.
Yeah. Yeah, I can't see any compelling reasons and obviously the folks that petitioned didn't really give a justification about what any concerns they might have, so.
Let me close public hearing, motion opposed, public hearing.
So moved, second.
Motion made second, post-public hearing, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Go ahead with your thoughts.
Yeah, obviously this, this looks like an agricultural area, I mean, you know, you've got fields as far as you can see towards the north, southeast and west of this area, and it's not like it's right there in the middle of the of the little town area there, so with, without any additional information, I wouldn't see any reason to question the judgment of the Plan Commission on this.
Is that a motion, do I have a motion?
I just wanted to give Commissioner Fossditch an opportunity to weigh in if he wanted to.
Well, they got fourteen acres there, so I mean, it, yeah, I don't see a reason not to prove it either.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve where it was presented. Second.
Motion made second to prove the ordinance as presented, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
And that's a one reading, right?
Yeah, okay. Next, we have Michael Oakland, is he, is he here?
Was that just first reading then?
That's just, I'm sorry, yes, first reading, we have to go back, I'm sorry. Do we have to?
Zoning amendments can be approved in just one, one meeting, yeah, I mean.
I think historically the zoning amendments you guys have done in three readings.
Okay. And that's fine if you'd like to.
Second, third, okay, and Nicholas will be here in case anybody's got any questions. Okay, Michael, somebody, there you go, come on up, sir.
All right.
How are you? Thanks for having me on, I appreciate it.
Please state your name and address and sign the.
I can't, can you handle this, pick me up? Hi, my name is Michael Oakland, I live at one eight one four two fourteen B Road, over in Culver. I had submitted some information for everyone to review, I'm not gonna take our time up going over all of that, but maybe a quick recap for some of the people that are here in the audience. I was sitting in my yard not long ago and noticed that there's a loud train that sounds its horns, two long, one short, one long. I didn't think much of it and then I started to notice it's happening all throughout the day. I noticed it in the middle of the night, at all hours of the night, sounding their horn, two long, one short, one long. To be honest with you, it sucks, I don't like it, it deserves the quiet, right, the peace, the reason that I brought out here. So I did some research, figured out, what can we do about this, why are they doing that? Well, they have to by law for safety, but if we make improvements to our train crossings, we can then apply to have it be a quiet zone, this has happened in a lot of communities in our area. The best part is that the federal government will pay up to ninety percent of this for us, so it's a very low out of pocket expense for us. They have huge amounts of money set aside through the Federal Railway Administration and other organizations within our government to cover this. So in my proposal that I wrote up, all I asked was that we make a motion today or in a coming meeting to assign that the Highway Commissioner, is that, it's Jason? Yeah, I guess we had a person, kind of start that process, and I spelled it out in a little bit more detail for you gentlemen in that paperwork, but this initial step costs us nothing, just gets north, northern self folk involved, right? Running their diagnostics, letting us know exactly how much, we can do that sort of thing. Are there any questions? Were there any questions, comments on things that I submitted, I didn't know where we stood with everything?
My comment would be more, Sean, liability wise, when you change these, I know everything you change changes li- can change liability issues, so change something like this, does that create liability on this if something should happen?
I, I don't see it as, as, you know, causing any problems, as long as you go through whatever the proper steps are to enact it, uh, um, you know, in general, governmental liability for, um, accidents, I mean, like, I think it may have been in the drainage board meeting, uh, Commissioner Bohannon said, anybody can sue you for anything, and that's the case, but governmental liability is really quite low, uh, there's lots of immunities that, that, uh, government enjoys for um, design of roadways and, and things like that, that, uh, really shouldn't be any kind of concern, as long as the proper steps are followed to, to implement.
If I may, so, the horn sound is my selfish driver behind this, but the real impact that you'll see is in order for it to be a quiet zone, we have to radically improve the safety, and that's what you're paying for, you're not paying for them to turn off the horns, we're gonna, that's an after the fact. We're gonna make better crossings, we had accidents at Borough, maybe eighteen months ago, we've had buses have issues at these crossings, because you have old tech, right, these are just old gates going down, and it's easy to drive around them, but when you cross in town, you see you have things like medians or bike choppers in there, you can, we're improving the safety, that's really what this is all about, is making our crossings safer for our community, and then, oh, by the way, we're gonna make it quiet, which is a nice plus for our community, so.
Yeah. Oh, I, I gotta say, I appreciate the, appreciate the amount of research you did on this, because when you first sent your emails to us, I opened all that information up, I'm like, wow. I, I don't think I've seen a whole lot of things that thoroughly researched before the initial email or contact to us, and I, I do appreciate the late work on that, um, I'd, I'd be in favor of those, pending, pending see how much it, uh, costs us, and how much money the federal government might wanna give us to do this.
Looks like, uh, his, his estimate is that it would be a fifty to eighty thousand dollar investment by the county.
That, yeah, tax for one or both.
Uh, upwards of eighty would be for both, again, it's gonna cost us about ten percent. They'll cover approximately ninety, and there's other ways through in kind and other grants that are out there that we can also make some of that other cost. Um, but I already talked with, is it, did you say Yakum, is that his? So I've already spoken with their office, and Griffin and Nate, they're already on board, and they're ready to sign on and support us in doing it. Um, they think this is a good thing for our community, um, and they were agreement that the funds are there, and they're gonna keep us in the loop as to when they're available, but we need to start the process and sign that, those are intent and things with, with the proper channels.
Yeah, so I would say the, the only possible drawback that I can think to this is that, um, trains do park quite often in that area, and if they're, if they're sitting there and not actually blocking the, the railroad crossing, but sitting there on the crossing, that it, it will force people to go, you know, a mile or two out of the way to, to cross the tracks, um, but, uh, you know, when you balance that against the safety concerns, I think that's a, that's a minor issue, so.
I'm not sure if State Route seventeen would be an issue for us
Yeah.
to do something with a state road, so
Right.
I don't know if that'd be an issue or not for us, okay? The other, the county, obviously it's under our, you know, well, essentially under our jurisdiction, the rail crossings not under our jurisdiction, that's something to look at, I don't know what, uh,
Yeah, we need to get cooperation from NDOT on State Route seventeen, but.
Yeah, I think you'd have to cooperate here to make anything happen there, but.
And I included contact information for the people at the Federal Railway Administration, NDOT, all those people that are involved, because you're absolutely right, it, it is a a multi-group project, I know that can be challenging, getting different your bureaucracies together, but you're a hundred percent right, and so that's why I got that all started. Um, again, I'm trying to eliminate friction, because I know that people are busy, especially Jason's got a lot on his plate.
I'd, I'd be interested to hear Jason's thoughts on this, since he's here, so.
Jason, do you have any thoughts on this? Come on up, Jason.
Call for the quiet zone, as we've been proposed, but there is another one coming up, which we are in contact with MACOG, and we are somewhat starting this process right now, getting the applications around and submit. So that's kind of the first step, is filling out the applications, get everything started. Once you get all that done, then the studies are done, I think, is when they start going through and picking the projects that are gonna be awarded throughout.
So is, it'll be a competitive bidding project, and then based, based on how much of an impact that the, the.
And it could be state roads, county roads, any of them, I think they're looking at it, the big picture of it is the quiet zone areas.
All right, so this is already on your radar, and you're on board, okay.
I think the big thing is, is figuring out what it's going to cost, but that would be somewhat of MACOG's initiative to finding out what those, uh, fees are gonna be, it is correct, it is a ninety-ten grant.
And would be an engineering study and stuff like that?
All that has to be done, because it has to be so much of an area for that to even qualify for.
Okay, and is that a, the, the engineering study stuff, would that be our responsibility?
No, I think that'd be a lot of that, going through MACOG would help with a lot of that stuff.
Okay.
So I think what you're telling us, we'll just wait and see, and see what.
Yeah, when this next call actually opens up and starts, but there is going to be another one, and, yeah, they have been pushing a lot of the railroad, um, crossings, um, eliminations, uh, upgrade and all those type things too with railroad.
Okay, so we don't even need to really take action on this today, because you've already got it in process, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for your concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. Uh, attorney report, Sean.
Okay, um, first I have, uh, for your approval and for Stan's signature, um, a document to participate in a, um, Purdue Direct settlement, um, having to do with Purdue Pharma opioid litigation. Um, in the past, through, in the other various opioid litigations, uh, there's been in cases where the Indian Attorney General is involved, um, there hasn't always been the requirement for each individual political subdivision to sign on to participate in the settlement, but, uh, this one is, uh, different, and so requires this participation form. Um, our attorneys that the county had previously, uh, engaged with Cohen and Marad to, uh, work on these opioid, uh, lawsuits, uh, recommends your participation in that, and so, um, don't, as of yet, know what uh, the, the amount of the settlement will work out to be, um, but this is, uh, part of the Purdue Pharma and the Sacco family, where I guess the principal owners of Purdue Pharma that have gone through a bankruptcy process, and, uh, I think all of the amounts and things are still being, uh, worked out, but our, our council recommends your participation, so I'd ask for approval of the participation document that stands authority to sign on your behalf.
So moved.
Second, motion made, second, to, uh, approve the participation document for the opioid settlement, uh, with President of the Board signing on behalf of the Board, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Okay, good, um, then the only other thing I have is just a brief update on the, uh, uh, Thomas McFadden litigation, um, following your last meeting, I, uh, filed the amended complaint adding Mr. Woodward uh, as a plaintiff, um, and then also, uh, response to, uh, Mr. McFadden's motion to dismiss. I, uh, in response to the motion to dismiss, I kind of, um, went beyond just talking about responding to his motion to dismiss the original complaint, but noted that we were filing an amended complaint that, um, as I saw it, you know, kind of fixed any of the concerns that they, they expressed, um, and I was hopeful that that would dissuade them from, you know, continuing to raise those issues, but, um, unfortunately, they, uh, Mr. McFadden's lawyers has indicated that they intend now to file a, a new motion to dismiss our amended complaint, um, raising the same, the same issues, um, the court has set a hearing, uh, for that, uh, to consider that new motion and our response to that for, uh, October the tenth at ten AM, uh, it'll be at the, the new, uh, courthouse facility up in Elkhart, so, um, we'll await the, the new motion, which, uh, should be, uh, rolling in in the next couple of weeks here, and then I will respond to that, which I think largely the, both their new motion and my response will be kind of taking the filings that have already been filed and you know, re- reorganizing a little bit to meet any new arguments they make, but that's all that I have.
Might be interesting to attend that hearing to see what a brand-new courthouse looks like.
Yeah, definitely.
I have one more thing, Sean, before we, uh, leave your part of the agenda. It's become quite obvious, this board's not gonna quit spending. And in light of what we've been hearing lately, that we as a county could be on the hook for this, all this, uh, that's really concerning. Uh, I have talked to some people, I don't wanna throw anybody under the bus, I mean, there's a, there's, uh, I have strong reason to believe they're not getting a grant, I mean, it's just not gonna happen. So, to keep spending more money for something that I don't believe is gonna happen, based on the grant, we were told, you know, originally eighty-five to ninety-five dollars for this project for the landlord, now we're up to over two hundred plus, according to their doc, according to their, uh, information, two-twenty, something like that. Uh, I believe it's seriously time because of their actions to look at disbanding this board. So I don't, I'm just starting that conversation, throwing it out there, and maybe that would be something we look at Wednesday night, have that discussion. Uh, I just don't want the taxpayers of Marshall County on the hook for any more, any more of this.
Yeah.
I think there's still, there's gonna be issues going forward, so we have to find solutions for the property owners that do have a problem, but throwing more money away, I'm not sure is the answer.
Do we have a total dollar amount right now for expenditures?
Somewhere in one point one million.
Yeah, one point one million?
Somewhere in that area, yeah. I can't tell you exactly, but that's according to, uh, the presentation to council last week, that was.
Yeah, Mrs. Cox presented a, a number of one point one four million dollars, that was through the end of May, so that did not include the, uh, June and July receipts, or anything they've spent so far here in August.
And I'm trying to remember, because January seemed like a long time ago now, where were they at when we originally asked them to stop, or consider stop spending money?
Half, half of that, five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars.
Something around somewhere around there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, while we've, while we brought this up, I, I certainly support, um, what you're saying, Stan, I do think it's time to, uh, petition the appropriate authorities
I.D.M.
for dissolution of the Marshall County Regional Sewer Board. I'd like to, since we're on the topic, um, I'd like to get the board's permission, um, I've secured a meeting with Governor Braun on, um, August twenty-eighth, um, and so I'd like to, uh, get the, uh, the board's permission to, uh, to travel to Indianapolis on the twenty-eighth, and to, uh, submit a letter, uh, personally to Governor Braun, uh, requesting introduction to, uh, Suzanne Jawarowski, the Secretary of Energy and National, uh, Natural Resources, so that we can, uh, get some very specific attention, um, to our, uh, to our issue here.
Okay, thoughts? So, is she the one we really wanted, need to talk to, or?
So she's the Cabinet Secretary who oversees I.D.M., so there, there is a, there is an administrator for I.D.M., um, but she is the, the direct supervisor of, of, of I.D.M., so.
Okay, and to date, for the money being spent, we don't have, do we have blueprints, anything tangible, other than consulting fees and?
The, the understanding is that, that they are about halfway done with, with the blueprints, now, why in the world you wanna have, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars worth of engineering fees, um, for a project that they still contend that if they don't get grants, they're not gonna go forward with it, those, those things are ruthless unless they move forward with the project.
I'm sorry, but I've seen no signs they're not going forward, no matter what the cost.
Yeah. So.
I guess, I guess I would say right now, uh, and it would, it would cause Sean to probably do a resolution that we would send to I.D.M. Uh, I, I guess my suggestion right now is to just discuss it, think about it,
Mm-hmm.
uh, whether we wanna, uh, bring it up uh, Wednesday night
Mm-hmm.
for the joint work session?
Yep.
And get some other people's thoughts, but, uh, at this point in time, this wasn't my choice way to go, but spending's gotta stop, I mean, we've said that before, and it's fell on deaf ears.
Yep.
I don't know what else to do.
So right now, we have a joint session, uh, scheduled with the council, six PM on Wednesday, um, to discuss this. Uh, we've invited the, uh, um, the planning department to attend, so that we can discuss, uh, the situation with the ordinances. We've invited the health department to attend, so that we can, um, get to the bottom of what actually is the, the roadblock that's preventing people from repairing their systems that are already existing. Um, and, uh, so we're gonna discuss that with, with the council and then try to get to the bottom of it. It's my understanding from watching their meeting last week, that the Regional Sewer Board has, um, uh, advertised that they plan on attending this meeting, um, and I know that we're, we're probably gonna take public comment at that meeting as well.
That'd be up to the council, it's their meeting.
Yep, so that, so that meeting has already been advertised, um, and then, um, are, we're gonna advertise a, a separate business meeting for, for that evening to discuss.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss some other issues, but yeah, that could be something we put on the agenda, if we wanted to put on the agenda.
So I'd, I'd like to add to the agenda, because we don't have a lot of time to advertise, I wanna make sure that, that, um, we can, we can consider a resolution, if it's available, um, to, uh, to entertain the, uh, the act to dissolve the, the Regional Sewer Board that night.
Advertise that, Angie? Did you do the other yet?
No, because the timing of the meeting has changed when you came in this morning.
Right.
Uh, and again, I, I, my audit, my office cannot be here, we have already, um, as I had already stated, we had already had plans, so we were not available when that meeting was scheduled, so Sean can be deputized, there is a state statute to take the minutes for that meeting in place of my office. Uh, your work session, as a reminder, you can take no action, you can only do that at your special meeting.
Right.
And that, uh, is something that you need to communicate with me, what time? You're wanting to do your meetings, and I have notices that can be posted, uh, my understanding was five thirty, there was going to be one meeting, executive session.
Yes.
Six o'clock is your work session, so I need to know what time you want your special meeting.
You wanna have, try to have a special meeting at five forty-five, you wanna do.
Well, I, I think it probably would be best to do it after we have the joint meeting, so we'd, to advertise it, yeah, immediately following the joint work session.
Seven thirty, or immediately following the work session.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and I, and I do apologize, ma'am, ma'am, I know that, uh, um, that you're not available, and I, I don't like to do this when, when it's, uh, in a, in a conflict like that, but with the, the rapidly evolving situation here, I think it's important that we act quickly, so.
You have a problem with that, you good with that?
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you need a motion on that, that's what we're doing, Angie?
Not necessarily, I mean, if you want some motion, that's fine, I don't see where, you don't motion when other meetings are called, so.
Okay, and you're, you're able to attend?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And then would, would you all support, um, or authorize me to, uh, to travel to Indianapolis on the twenty-eighth and, uh, and communicate our request to the governor?
I would make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made, second, to authorize, uh, council, or, excuse me, Commissioner Bohannon, hold on, have Commissioner Bohannon, uh, travel to Indianapolis on behalf of the commissioner board and, uh, express our concerns.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Madam Holder.
I have your August fourth minutes.
I'm, motion approved?
I move to approve the August fourth minutes.
Second?
Second.
Motion made, second, approve the August fourth meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I have AP claims.
I move to approve the AP claims.
Second.
Motion made, second, approve the AP, AP claims, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And I have payroll.
I move to approve the payroll claims.
Second. Motion made, second, approve the payroll claims, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And that's all I've got.
Thank you, you have anything else for the auditor? Anybody? Okay, uh, now we're down to public comments, anyone have anything on their mind they wanna speak about, doesn't that be agenda item of the day? Bill?
Kind of expected, that.
Why am I not surprised, go ahead, come on up here, please state your name and address, and please remember, these are three minutes, okay?
So, first thing I wanna say is, uh, I was able to make it to the Jackie thing Friday, it was great, I appreciate everybody's efforts on that and, and the willingness to acknowledge her, so thank you very much, it was great. Um, on the sewer thing, um, I really hope it is dissolved, and I think what we need to do is try and establish some kind of task force, advisory committee or something, so when the homeowners do have issues, we can work with the health department to find solutions. There's been other communities in the country that have done this, um, there's some websites out by EPA and they do, they go through, they actually investigate what the problems are, you know, and how they can save the septic systems because there's so many in community and they're always going to be a part of the community. I mean, uh, from what I've read, there's about twenty percent of, of the houses, you might say, have septic systems. And there are solutions, you know, um, Sludge Hammer presented a really nice solution to the sewer board and then they got up and PP'd all over, you know, and said it didn't work and this and that, well, they do work, you know, and they've used these things all over the country and all over the world. So I think those things need to be actually looked at and these people that have, um, issues and make recommendations. So I, I would think eventually we'd want some kind of advisory committee, um, to help with those things. And I guess that's pretty much about all I've got to say, is there are solutions and I think we need to look at helping the people, not shoves up and down their throat. And I think the health department needs to be on board with it and, and work with, a- and I'm willing to be a part of that if need be, or, or help organize it, so. Because I think the people do need help, you know, there are solutions, but there are people that do need help and don't know where to go. So I think if we give them someplace to go, you know, it, or not just throw them out.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, yeah, well, I'd, I'd like to thank you, Bill. Um, the, I've seen a lot of, um, citizen remonstrances against projects over the years, both here in, in Marshall County and around the region. And I have to say that your group has probably done more work to educate themselves and present constructive alternatives as opposed to just simply being opposed to something, um, better than, than what I've ever seen. Um, and so I thank you and, and your, your folks that are working on this. Uh, I know we've asked a lot of these, uh, companies to come to make a lot of presentations so far. I, I attended the one at the library a few weeks ago and obviously they were at the sewer board. Um, is it possible for, for somebody from, uh, um, Sludge Hammer or from, uh, from AK Industries to, to come and, and be able to, um, I'd like, you know, maybe not a full presentation, but just the, the highlights of why there are alternatives presented? Because I know, yeah, like, like you said, they presented those at the sewer board meeting last week. And it seemed to me like they were able to, uh, dispel a lot of the, the objections and then they were just kind of dismissed. And so I'd, I'd like to get a chance to, to give them an opportunity to, to get that out into the public. And, and I know, um, some of the news media is going to be there as well, so it'd be good to, to try to get some of those facts on the record if possible, so.
I've reached out to them to see if anybody can make it to Wednesday night meeting, uh, for their expertise, you know, if there's any questions or, or if you would like them to present something small, but I've just reached out for them to attend, so I'm waiting to hear back. Who can be available, um, you know, but I have reached out already.
Yeah, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Back here in the corner, I think you got your hand up, didn't you?
There you go.
Come on up. Please state your name and address once you sit down at the speaker and sign the sheet, please.
My name is Jerry B. Metra, the second, um, from ten two oh nine King Road in Plymouth.
Okay.
And, uh, I've been going around doing a lot of, uh, videoing of events and I was able to make it to the Jackie Velorski Road dedication on Friday. Uh, I recorded that and I wanted to come here and let you guys know that I posted the, uh, two versions of the video on archive.org under a public domain licensing, so anybody can use it anywhere for anything at any time.
Okay.
So, uh, if you guys want a copy of that, you can get it at archive.org, uh, under my name. You just go to archive.org, search for Jerry B. Metra, the second, uh, it'll show you a list of videos that I've created. Uh, like I've got every single one of the, um, uh, River Park Square concerts, the Mayor's Month of Music. I don't have them all processed yet, but, uh, I've got a number of them up online. I've got the Jackie Velorski videos, I got, there's two of them, one has an image overlay, the, just describing the event and the speakers and, uh, the location. And the other one has no overlay on it, it's just the raw video, so if you guys want to put your own overlays on it or use it in any way, shape or form, uh, for anything, like if you want to play it at your church or if you want to, uh, being released in the public domain, you can do anything with it. So without asking my permission, you can just download it and use it any way you want.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Could you spell your last name for me so I can search that out?
Uh, N-E-T-T-R-O-U-E-R.
All right.
I need to sign this, so you'll have my name on this if it's got a print.
Okay, okay.
So.
Anyone else here want to speak? Have any public comments?
Seeing that, I think you had an issue, you would have brought back.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I almost forgot. Um, so, uh, yesterday, um, I was watching some, uh, YouTube videos on, uh, TIF districts and things like that. As, as the conversation about, uh, property tax reform and all that's been going on the last couple of months. I know that, uh, one of the things that my, uh, um, citizens advisory group has been discussing has been TIF reform. And I kind of, uh, popped into my head, um, why don't I call Dr. Michael Hicks, who we've quoted so many times here during the meeting, and, and sort of get his input, um, and surprisingly enough, he was in the office yesterday. So I, I spent about a half an hour on the phone with him. Uh, Dr. Hicks is the Director of Business and Economic Research at Ball State. Uh, one of the nation's, uh, best experts on, uh, economic development practices and things. Um, and, uh, he has agreed, uh, to come here to Marshall County and to have a, uh, a conversation with our stakeholders about, um, best practices and, um, new trends in economic development and what he thinks is, uh, is, would be truly effective, um, for a rural county of fifty thousand people in, you know, on the outskirts of a metropolitan area, like something that would be very specific for Marshall County. So, um, I would like to have the board's permission, um, to, uh, set up a work session at some future date, uh, with, uh, Dr. Hicks to, uh, invite the council and then also to, um, invite the other, uh, stakeholders in, um, the economic development, uh, area in the county to, to come and join in that conversation. So I don't know how soon that would be, um, but, uh, it's something I'd kind of like to, to get the ball rolling on, so.
I've heard it multiple times, he's very good. He's one of the few guys can keep you awake during one of these, you know, presentations.
Yeah.
He's very good, very knowledgeable. I've, I, I think it's a good thing. I kind of like get the budget process maybe done first.
Yeah.
We got a lot on the plate right now, but yeah, I would say give it him and maybe fall.
Yep.
Uh, we set something up, invite everybody to come in and just let him come in here and do a presentation where anybody wanted to come in and attend.
Yep.
Any interested parties.
And then I've also, um, one of the other folks I think I'd like to invite to join that session would be, uh, Jason Arp, who's a, uh, a former city councilman from Fort Wayne. He's, uh, um, probably one of the most, uh, outspoken, um, public officials in the state on, on TIF and economic development, things like that. I'd like to ask him to, to join the, uh, conversation as well, so, okay.
You have a problem with that?
I'm good with that, yeah.
Okay. We'll set that up later in the fall. You have anything else?
That's all I got.
Don't be smiling at me that way.
You haven't really got it.
Uh, I'd just like to bring up, uh, something I kind of ran into and I've been paying attention to it since the beginning of the year. I'm sure everybody's kind of familiar with internet outages and nine-one-one stuff like that related to Bright, Bright Speed service. Uh, we had quite a few of those incidents in the beginning of the year. Well, it seems like that's kind of migrated over into individual customers having problems with their internet service in general and kind of getting the runaround and trying to find out, like, when their internet service is going to come back on. And Bright Speed hasn't been very proactive with any type of solutions for those individuals. But ironically enough, they'll still take people's money. So I, I don't know if there's anything really we can do for the general public as far as that goes being, it's a private citizen versus company relationship going on there. But I do know that we do approve road cuts for fiber optic lines for them. The first one I think they brought before us was last, or last meeting earlier this month. Um, and I heard rumors, granted, I can't prove it, don't know if it's true or not, but potentially they're ta- doing those road cuts to sell off that fiber that they're running to other companies, which I think is kind of, kind of rubs me the wrong way in the fact that, well, how are you running brand new fiber lines when you're not even supporting your current existing customers? And I, we know there's federal dollars attached to that too, if you're running fiber for infrastructure. So it could, to me, it kind of seems like they're using our county right now just to grab money on the federal side to run fiber without actually serving people they're supposed to in our county. And I also know that we do business with them, uh, with them here at the county level also, which maybe we want to take a look at and reevaluate. I don't know if there's any official action that needs to be taken, I just wanted to put that out there right now, kind of keep an eye on that. And potentially maybe change the direction of who we do service with here in the building.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know if I'd be favorable for approving any more of their road cuts to put fiber in until they start taking care of the people of our county a little bit better.
I don't disagree, I don't know how much authority we have on that. I know in the past, we did that one time and it did get that company's attention. It wasn't, it wasn't them.
Yeah.
Uh, but it hasn't been something we've made a practice of, but it's something we can look at. I guess that would be something for Sean question, uh, because when it comes to the right ways and stuff, I mean, there's.
Yeah, there's state statutes that provide.
Yeah.
Utilities access, but I mean, we can certainly investigate it if we get to a point where you're willing to consider an action.
I'd like to find a way to hold them accountable for what they're doing to people who are trying to pay for services, especially since I'm sure, sure there's people out there that use Bright Speed and we just started the school year. And of course, Internet's a pretty big proponent of doing homework and things like that, that now for students. I don't know the exact number of people that are affected by it, but I, I hear quite a few gremlins and I know it affects their nine-one-one system. And that's my main concern right now is if they're not supporting current services here and we're using them for nine-one-one services, what happens if they just pull out of our county and we don't have something in place already to take that over?
Might be the kind of thing that it'd be worthwhile to, you know, reach out to a contact and see if you could, you know, get a private meeting with some of, someone with some authority there and try to communicate that you're serious about the, um, you know, the way that they've been treating your constituents here and your own business, right?
Well, and it, when it's, it's already I know for at least one person that went as far as Mr. Jordan or state representative reaching out to him. The best he was able to get for them is a second level of support and still no results. So that's why I'm kind of bringing it up as a point of concern here, especially since some of our nine-one-one stuff's tied in with that.
Yeah, could, could we check on what the status of our contract is with them for, uh, for services and, and then see if it might be?
We'll look into that. At least see who the contact is.
Well, or in, in to see what our options are as far as how long are we locked in and, you know, are there any other providers that are available, so.
I think I've always been looked at, you want to take care of that, look into that?
I, I'm going to take care of that, I'd be more than happy to find somebody with the power to have a conversation about that one. Um, and I think I might have a point of contact already, I got to go back and look through some of my emails beginning of the year.
Okay. We got to know where I'm here, we got to, uh, Marshall County Tourism Appointment, is there a recommendation, Angie?
I did not receive any recommendation.
Received any yet either, we need to find an appointment for Marshall County Tourism. Uh, do you know, is there any, uh, rules on that appointment?
Yes, there are, when the commissioners originally set this, excuse me, the new board up to meet the statutory requirements, uh, that were amended, they had held interviews for that position, there are still, there were several that we received, um, and then we think, I think it was a five-member board. I, I don't require, yeah, five-member board. Uh, the members have to have some, per the statute, they have to, a simple majority, the members must be engaged in a convention, visitor or tourism business or involved in promoting conventions, visitors and tourism. I do know that the city of Plymouth has a couple of appointments and they're, one of their appointments is the director of the Blueberry Festival. So we do have some that are on there, uh, and I believe the simple majority now is involved in that, but that was the direction that the commissioners at the time had leaned, was going towards people for promotions. I have not heard any recommendations for that, but that was effective immediately, the resignation, so.
Who's, who's president of that board?
I believe the president was the one that resigned.
Yeah.
Oh, is it? Oh, that's right, okay, I'm sorry.
They had other things that were taking up his time and.
Okay, you're right.
Yeah.
That's right, he'll just step down as president of the board, it's over.
It was a shame to lose Wyatt, he was, he was a, a good board member. I have spoken with one highly qualified individual who was interested, uh, but she wanted to get some additional information and I, I did attempt to connect her with, uh, one of the board members so that she could get an idea about the scope of the work and level of commitment. Um, I have not heard back on that yet and I followed up with a text this morning, so I'm, I'm hoping to get a, if, if she says yes, I think she would be a great candidate, so.
Well, think about it, we need, we need to try to find somebody by the next meeting to make our appointment to that board. Okay, anyone have anything else?
I'm.
Motion to adjourn?
I move to re-adjourn.
Second. And second to adjourn, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.